Please rise from the emigration, followed by pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have received. Lord, we ask a special blessing to the City Commission, that you give us the knowledge and wisdom to make the decisions for the best interest of our community. Lord, please look after and guide all of our first responders and protect them, as well as all our city employees. For all these things, we ask you in this precious heavenly name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those minutes have been expurgated? Are there any additions, solutions, or corrections? Hearing none, we need a motion.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like, sign. Motion carried, announced. Next is our minutes of our regular meeting on March twenty-third. Are there any additional solutions or corrections to these? We need a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, announced. Presentations, proclamation twenty-three oh-one, the Quarter Water's Conservation Month. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature. And whereas the state of Florida, Water Management District, and the City of Winter Garden are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the City of Winter Garden and the state of Florida has designated April, typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the City of Winter Garden has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water, thus prompting a healthy economy and community. And whereas leak prevention is commonly thought to be the first step in conserving water, the City of Winter Garden will encourage citizens and businesses to focus on fixing leaks. Therefore, it's my great pleasure and privilege as Mayor of the City of Winter Garden to proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-three as Quarter Water Conservation Month, and call upon the residents and businesses of Winter Garden to do their share to protect this precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. For this twenty-fifth year of Water Conservation Month, there will be a special focus on fixing leaks in all forms of water loss. Good, thank you.
Now it's time, speaking of water conservation, we've got a fun time of year, the Dropsavers poster winners. And if you are a teacher or one of the winners, please step on up now. The Water Works Society Association sponsors a Dropsavers poster contest for students in kindergarten through twelfth grade. And we ask them to depict a poster, either written form, or drawing, or both, a water conservation measure, that's what we want. This year, we had eighty-two students participate, and we had seven schools. And the posters that are here tonight, these were the winners and honorable mentions. These posters also were sent to the state to represent Winter Garden. And, you know, instead of me talking, why don't we just recognize the winners? So, ready? All right, so our first winner in Division One, which was kindergarten and first grade, is Liam Jeski from Star Child Academy. Thank you so much. And our next winner is Division Two, River Estes. And Division Three, which is fourth and fifth grade, Emily Morgan. All right, our middle school winner is Bailey McLean. And our high school winner is Carlin Whitney from West Orange High School. Three honorable mentions, and that is Spencer Marcus. And Christopher Drummond. Actually, I'm really excited. Come on, Christopher. This is the first time we had a homeschool participate. And so he is representing Drummond's family homeschool. And our next honorable mention is Autumn Tucker from Lakeview Middle School. Remember I said that we had, we submit our school winners to the state? Well, yesterday, I received an email, and guess what? We had some good news. And so, we have a second-place winner from Division Two, and that is River Estes. Point out your poster to them. It's a turtle, I don't know if you can see it, it's a turtle taking a bath, and it says, Shower Faster Than I Do. There's still more good news. We also had a first-place winner, and that is Bailey McLean. And hers is half-heart for preserving water, so she is first in the state. More good news, we had one more winner, and another first place to Carlin Whitney, first place in the state for the high school. Anyway, all right, well, as wonderful as students are, I also want to thank the teachers. They take the time, they're already so busy with everything else they're doing, and they take time to set aside to talk about water conservation and to let these students do these wonderful posters that make us on the map for water conservation in Florida, because we had three winners this year, I think that's amazing. So first, we have, and all my shirts are all here, Ms. Weiss from Foundation, she's not there. And Carol Kelly from Oakland Charter. From Star Child. Almost Temple isn't here. Okay. Okay. Miss Mill from Lakeview Middle. Trunette from West Orange. And Adriana Ferrisoli from Foundation. Monica Marcus from West Orange. And there's more. Ms. Prey from Star Child. Ms. Drummond, the homeschool mom. Mrs. Donnelly, she's, this is really. So thank you all, students, parents, teachers, for letting your child learn about water conservation. And I'm actually sending you all out, and if you all have questions about water conservation, these are the experts. Thank you.
Regular business, recommendation approved, additional traffic unit staff. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Traffic complaints and the need for enforcement has greatly increased. The request for traffic counts and studies, followed by enforcement and warranty, complaints are overwhelming current staff dedicated to those concerned. Our city manager is working to complete the strategy to formulate a transportation plan with other measures. The police department will be working in conjunction to educate and enforce traffic laws, gaining increased compliance. I'm requesting an additional three sworn, one staff officer, two motor officers, and two civilian staff of community service officers, who are booked to dedicate downtown for all parking issues and conflicts downtown. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Chief, as much as we have stood up here with Wayne, I can't imagine anybody not supporting this, I would say, to be honest.
Is that a real thing, or a seconded?
No.
I thought it was.
Somebody make a motion.
So moved.
We have motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, announced.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
We appreciate it.
As opposed to that, I'd like to have permission to do so.
Got some vintage ears here.
We keep things around for a while.
You got the anten tags on some of them, I guess. Any questions? We need a motion.
Motion to approve, very good man, and so plus for authorized resale, disposed.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, announced. Wait a minute, sir, you can't go quite yet. We heard a rumor that today is somebody's birthday. You really think you just come up with one?
Sneak right back.
Well, happy birthday.
Thank you.
So we can get in, can we start singing?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, my kids. Happy birthday to you.
All right.
Oh, no.
That's actually why the crew was out here today.
It is, that's why we're continuing.
Recognition approved, traffic signal improvements, fair share agreement with the faulty homes. Yeah, are you out?
It's not my work.
There's not your work.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an agreement between the city and the faulty group as part of the conditions of approval for the Dupont Baller subdivision to pay for project's future traffic impacts to the proposed traffic signal to be located at the intersection of Winter Garden Island Road and Roper Road. Developers submitted a traffic study to the city which determined that the eighty-seven lot subdivision would contribute one point six percent of the traffic volume at that signal. Based on the three thousand dollar estimate to install the signal, this equates to a fair share amount of four thousand eight hundred dollars that developers require to contribute. Staff and residents, approval of that agreement.
Four thousand?
I accept those, my comments.
Four thousand eight hundred dollars, yes.
I suggest in the future, we just kind of say twenty thousand dollars, instead of spending twenty thousand dollars, a million four between the two. But anyway, thank you. Any questions? Yeah, I guess. We need a motion. Motion to approve the traffic table agreement for fair share agreement.
Your company is for four thousand eight hundred bucks.
We have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, announced. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, recommendation approved, site plan. Thirteen five hundred, what's going to drive?
Final plat?
Final plat, I'm sorry.
So this is a request for final plat approval for Ernie North Park, which is a point nine one acre property located at the corner of North Park Avenue and Pine Street. The plat would create nine townhome lots, as well as associated common area tracks for shared elements like farm or an open space. The applicant is also requesting approval of a recreation fair share agreement to mitigate the required active recreation space that could not be provided on the property. The fair share amount is twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the final plat, as well as the perks and recreation fair share agreement, subject to staff conditions.
Questions from the commission? Is this pass all inspections?
The final inspections for the, it's still being constructed, but in terms of the final plat. Not sure of the fair stat data, Joe, what's your anticipated completion date?
We're closing on four units at the end of this one. Just keep up the stakes, Joe Hoffer.
Wait, take a second, yeah, just keep naming the address, please.
Joe Hoffer, one three, I'm sorry, one eight five eight five Bates Avenue, U S. We plan to close and have five plots and a four-plot, so we have four of the five that are going to be closing in the next two weeks, so we're looking to get the COs, and thus we're working towards that. The four-plots, we should have those finished about midnight, that's what our goal is, to have those finished. So we're having landscaping done now, fencing and everything else, all the exterior improvements should be finished in the next two weeks.
Are you through, Peyton?
Oh, yes. And we're planning to have an open house, you're welcome to come over here, I guess, in two weeks.
It does look like what I remember seeing, to be honest. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? We need a motion.
Motion to approve final plan of thirty North Park Avenue, which is recreational fair share agreement of twelve thousand two sixty-nine and ninety-four cents.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, announced. Now try to bring the right line. Recommendation for site plan for property located at thirteen five hundred West Colonial Drive.
This is a request to demolish the existing Burger King building, located at the corner of West Colonial Drive and Daniels Road, and redevelop the property with a new, more contemporary Burger King building and site design. The new Burger King building will be slightly smaller than the existing at three thousand three hundred forty-nine square feet. The director will be in the same location with an added bypass ring for easy circulation. A directional median will be installed in the Daniels Road driveway to ensure that it is right out of the lane. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the new Burger King site plan with staff conditions.
Questions from the commission?
I'm sorry, is this going to be the same owner, did corporate take this over from the franchise?
I believe it's the same owner, yeah. I believe it might be a code corporate, so we're going to get it, I think.
My concern here is that it's been in pretty dehorrible condition, and I'm not just talking about itself, but just the trash that's piled up, they're not maintaining it, and so, we'll forgive it, we should do it again if not. I want it to be good for people.
Yeah, we will, if code enforcement needs to get involved, then we will, but hopefully it's a step in the right direction for them to clean up their own.
Any other questions? We need a motion. Motion to approve the site plan for property located at thirteen five hundred West Colonial Drive, subject to staff conditions. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, announced. Through the site plan at six eight and six ninety Garden Commerce Parkway. Yes, ma'am.
This is our request to construct an office warehouse building on a one point nine four acre property located in the Garden Homers Industrial subdivision. The proposed building is twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and two square feet in size, and the site includes forty-six parking spaces, as well as a loading area in the rear part. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of enhanced builders' site plan and staff conditions.
Questions from the commission? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Move to approve the site plan for property located at six eight and six ninety Garden Commerce Parkway, enhanced builders, subject to staff conditions.
Second. We have a second. All in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, announced. Site plan for nine oh two Avalon Road.
Thank you, this is our request by the city to construct a temporary fire station on a point four five acre property located at nine oh two Avalon Road. The city would install two buildings on the side, age twenty-four foot by sixty-foot personnel building and a thirty-six foot by forty-foot building. Two access drives would be provided along Capitol Road. The building's access road would be a total of close configuration to save existing persons on site. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the temporary fire station plans and staff conditions.
Questions?
Just comment, here, I wanted to thank some staff, all of you for trying to preserve the trees, keep the natural, working with the county, all the things you do, I know there's a lot of lifting and work there.
I see the energy driving out there one day, so, nice job, this is all. Two, five, private?
I got two head nodding.
We need a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, announced. Ah, community event. Yes, ma'am.
Community Culture Day. A local community organization called Global Not Local is requesting to partner with the City of Winter Garden to hold a community outreach event and basketball tournament at Sanders Park on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. The event will run from nine AM to five PM and will feature a basketball tournament, as well as additional kids games and other community-oriented activities. City of Winter Garden will buy tables, food, and staff to model the event. A portion of East Space Street and Eleventh Street will be closed for the duration of that event. And with that, staff recommends approval of the For the Community Day basketball tournament.
Same as last year. Sorry, Ashley, no questions?
Make motion to approve the For the Culture Community Day basketball tournament at Sanders Park, Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, nine AM to five PM, staff recommendations.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion, we have a second, all in favor, say in the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, announced. Thank you, ma'am. Matters from citizens of Winter Garden.
Anybody want to say anything? Can I talk here, or I don't need to?
Yes, you do.
You gonna make me walk all the way up there?
We gonna make you walk all the way up there, you gonna have to say your name and your address? You know, all that stuff. I'm gonna give you thirty seconds.
It says three minutes.
Burn, you hit it!
I did. My name is Ron McCash, I'm a citizen of Winter Garden, I did nine four four Copenhagen way. In August of this year, I'll be a citizen of Winter Garden, living here for fifty years. I've seen a lot of changes in Winter Garden, most of them positive. Believe me, I've seen a lot being here fifty years. And you got, anybody got me beat? Mayor? Somebody already got me beat? Okay, here we go. I only got three minutes. There's two things that has been bothering me, and I know you've been addressing it on a as-needed basis, and you've probably already talked about it, and I've come to these meetings, so I don't know what's been said about it. But the homeless situation, you know, that we have on the side of our streets, it's making the City of Winter Garden really look terrible. And me being a driver for Betty D. Ford, I see it every day when I go by, there's somebody laying on the sidewalk, they got a chance, and y'all have addresses, I see some of the homeless camps that they've got rent. We got a lot more to do. And I just kind of like to know, you know, where y'all stand on getting that situation correct. I only got three minutes. One other thing I'd like to say, and I don't know where it stands with the Dillard Street project, I've heard for quite a few years that we have a project underway to put some roundabouts and make it beautiful, so it'll send beautiful, right? Isn't that where we live? But where do we stand on giving the, if you can drive from Plant Street to fifty, the potholes will beat you to death. You know, if you're not going to do the project anytime soon, I think we need to put a fine layer of asphalt down to make it more.
Our city manager. We agree with you, huh?
That's all I had to say.
We agree with you, and on the first thing we are working on now, we're meeting with thousands of groups and trying to, you know, as we, as the orange grows, it disappeared, the woods have disappeared, it's more out and more prevalent in the economy, so we are trying to address that in a humane way, so that's, and help.
Any other question?
He's going to address it in a minute.
Okay.
You can, he'll do his report. You'll do it in a couple of minutes.
Okay. That's all, that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, gentlemen, and you, lady. My name is Allison Painter, I live at three ninety-three North Lakeview Avenue, and I have lived there for fifty-five years, and my parents owned that house since nineteen sixty, when it was built. So I've seen a lot of good and bad for the city. I will, I'm just going to address, there is a lot of homeless problems behind the river building on Dillard, behind ASMA's office, behind the bowling alley, I've seen it, a lot of people have seen it. The other thing I wanted to address is, I wanted to thank the chief for meeting with me this week about the traffic problems, and I mean, hopefully, we're going to get something solved pretty soon. The other thing that I wanted to say about the traffic problems is, if there was a way that we could make Lakeview from Crest down one-way, because that is a terrible, terrible intersection right there. I mean, I would be more than happy to go in door-to-door and ask the residents down there if they would like to make it one-way. I mean, yes, I know that there is a, there's a, you know, lake down there, people put boats in, but there's got to be something that happens there. The last thing is, is, so, are we going to, if you annex that property, we're putting a police station on there, right? We're going to put a police station on that property?
Down on that one? That's a fire station, that's fire.
Right, but the stuff that here, this stuff right here?
Oh, no, that's private, that would be twenty-four homes, what we postponed.
Okay, we need a new police station. We need a new police station. If we're going to put all of these new homes here, there, these, these men, they need something new. I mean, they're here to protect us, and I think that they deserve that. That police station right there, it's been there for a really long time, and it's time to upgrade. It's time to upgrade. That's all I have, thank you, gentlemen. And you, lady.
Matters from city attorney. Say, ma'am.
Just a few items. Beginning April seventeenth through the twenty-first, we're going to be doing some smoke testing of the sanitary sewer system. We placed a notice, along with a map of the areas that we're going to cover, and there's outside, we also sent about eighteen thousand notices out, which is far too many for this first round, but I'd be at the next door. As to gentleman's question for Dillard Street, we are still in the process of acquiring the rideway, so until such time as we get on the rideway, we need for the project, we need for the project. But coming into our annual street resurfacing program for this year, we recommend it's the need, excuse me, to resurface certain portions of it, so that activity is beginning, although with the recent rains that we've had, the work has been delayed, and the new schedule is for Sunday, April sixteen, Tuesday, April eighteen, and Wednesday, April nineteenth. And we will have a small section up here on that corner of Dillard and Bag, that will be added, but I don't have a schedule for that. And then, just some announcements on some upcoming events, here for sixteenth, we have the full charity bike ride, Sunday, April twenty-second, is Earth Day, and the Pat Pow Matter Matters Spring Softball Event. April twenty-eighth, we have Thousand Trees Birthday at Tucker Ranch, that's hosted by the Winter Grove Society. And April twenty-ninth, we have Arts in April, the VIP night, and just recently, just a pre-approval of a basketball tournament.
You, you talk quick when we could ride, so I didn't.
Yes, I'll be soon.
No, that's good, I'm going to try.
Ma'am, there was one question on the land acquisition, for those turnabouts.
Mayor, there's one question on the land acquisition, for those turnarounds. Are we, do we see that sometime by July, or?
I wish I could give you a solid answer, I mean, it's all dictated by the property owners. Uh, so, uh, I, I would make calls, talk about it every week, and, uh, some, some are ready to go, some, we're, we're done talking about it.
And if there's a line somewhere in San, that would be all, saying we're gonna look at other options.
We have our.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Certainly are. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
First, to the Women's Grove Society, it was just, every year's great, this one was just amazing. The weather was cooperative this year, and people were there, a hundred and seventy booths, I actually tried to stop by and just all the booths this year, and consistently, what I kept hearing was just how great everything was. People were treated nicely, accommodated, um, uh, you know, there at five thirty, five, five thirty in the morning, get set up, the city had everything ready for them, um, it was easy to load and offload. Uh, and then to the police department, uh, one of the things that a lot of our vendors found unique was that they could leave their, their setup there overnight, we provided security for that. A lot of cases, you have to go completely down in other cities and reset up the next day, uh, they found that this was a blessing, it was so long. I don't know what our final numbers was, does anybody, anybody know what our final number was with double here?
Like, I just, I was told like fifty, sixty thousand.
Yes, they go from fifty, because I thought fifty on the high, and it was packed.
Yeah. Maybe a little less, maybe around forty, fifty on Sunday, but.
But it just, it, it, and it's more essential, like, just how great it is women, her, her society, or they set the bar, they set it on like, okay. But, uh, it was, it was a fantastic event, so I appreciate the cooperation of the city and, uh, and all our different committees and society groups and stuff working together, so, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, did we, uh, get a, a date for the community meeting, the recent one, or, you have to announce it, community act, and I know we were very.
Okay, verify that, okay, but we haven't verified, okay, sure, sure.
I wanted to thank staff for doing that, we have a good meeting at Paulus Institute. For those who don't know, Paulus is our partner, in Winter Garden, uh, our nonprofits, and we're making progress. We're getting some things out, and they all have community meeting, kind of kick some of these things off, but we are, we are making some, have been making progress, we're making a lot more progress, but we can see that accelerate a bit, um, coming soon. Um, as far as the, the homeless situation, I get a lot of calls on it as well, I see a lot of things on the next door, I hear a lot of talk about it. There was, um, a gentleman here, when we were talking about this issue a few months ago, talking about a committee, and maybe starting a committee. It is hard for staff, there's a lot of things going on, as the mayor said, we're trying to do some things humanly. Maybe it is time to, like, a citizen community, uh, an action committee, or the action committee, or something like that, to handle these types of things, to make recommendations. Because it is hard, it's many facets, so there's a lot of facets to it, and, uh, you know, we can use advice still, I think, when it comes to, like, you know, I try to explain to people, we do a lot, take on some of these projects. Uh, we don't have the departments that the county has and the state has when it comes to these problems, and they have all the departments, they have social services departments. We don't have those things, it's usually a, an additional duty for a staff member, um, so we can use all the help we can, yeah, on those things. As far as this meeting goes, um, and what the police department's doing, I'm welcoming the new CSO, I think it's gonna be great. I'm gonna harp on it again, I say technology, I've been doing some reading on it, I know the mayor has too, technology, technology, technology. It's cameras, it's just every municipality in the country right now is having issues with, uh, staff shortages. Uh, so the more we can do with technologies, and I know everybody's worried about the Big Brother thing, but I think that's starting to wane a bit, because people realize the value of having cameras. You can monitor speed, you can monitor noise, loud exhausts, all those things, loud radios, all the things that are really annoying our citizens, and of course, people call us and, and complain as well, so I, I can't emphasize enough, we've gotta look into technology for the city. And that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We appreciate you for sharing.
Also, the technology thing, appreciate you, chief, to create another position, good luck filling it, but we can buy technology.
Go ahead, John, I've been working on my stuff.
So, just since the last meeting, we presented the traffic management plan and policy, we've already met with Traffic Logic, we've identified, uh, five, six areas, I think it's five or six, uh, for the product program where we're running Deploy Speed Cushions. We even kind of, uh, after meeting with them, decided that we're gonna evaluate speed tables, so we're gonna install one of those. Uh, and just today, we met with the vendor, uh, regarding some of the technology, and so we have another meeting that's probably before this, as well.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Sorry. That's all right. Yeah, I agree, like, the technology and cameras, they've gotten some states allowed, they take pictures and they issue tickets, but obviously Florida can't do that, so, you know, it would be a shame, but I do want to thank the staff for the Booming Grove, and, uh, for all the work, it's just overwhelming, uh, those two days, and, um, since I was involved in so well, I can, you always have to remember the husbands of all the ladies in Booming Grove, because they're down there at five o'clock in the morning, setting up and working, and doing what their wives tell them, so, uh, with that, we'll adjourn to our next meeting.